Gun Sports Radio is sponsored by Love Radio Network. Welcome to Gun Sports Radio, all about shooting, hunting, self-defense and more. Now here are the hosts of Gun Sports Radio, Dave Stahl and Lance Kelkey.
All right, folks. Hey, welcome. You are listening to Gun Sports Radio. I'm Dave.
And I'm Lance.
And this segment is brought to you by Gun Range San Diego, 7853 Balboa Avenue, Nordstrom's of gun ranges, 10 to 10, seven days a week. Go to gunrange sandiego.com, thegunrange sandiego.com. They have it all. Training, beautiful range, rentals, you name it, it's all right there. Go to thegunrange sandiego.com, seven days a week, 10 to 10. All right, guys, what's kicking? It looks like we got Mr. Joel Anderson on the line.
Is he on the line?
He's on the line.
I'm gonna grab my headphones.
Put your headphones on. Mr. Anderson, how are you and Merry Christmas?
Mister Anderson.
Well, I am trying to figure out how I can get out of state in return with ammo before January 1st.
All of us are.
Good luck with that.
Yeah, I tell you, they are working overtime in Sacramento against our Second Amendment rights.
I know. Horrible. Just terrible.
I think that that one is the one that that's probably going to impact me the most because you're not going to be able to have the direct shipments to your house like you have in the past. So you you really can't get the best price. And I think a lot of people are going to start looking into how to how to pack their own bullets. I mean, I don't know how else you can get around it. And keep it affordable.
Well, right now, the best price on ammo is is at Gun Range San Diego. We're doing we're doing a thousand rounds of nine of nine millimeter for 200 bucks. That's the exact same price that it is on Cheaper Than Dirt.
Come on, Dan.
And you don't pay shipping. So you come down there.
Yeah, but how much have you got left?
We got about, we just ordered a ton. We got about 50,000 rounds of nine millimeter and maybe 30,000 rounds of 223. And then we're also a full Dillon dealer, you know, Dillon Precision. We're a full Dillon Precision dealer too. So if you want to learn how to load your own or make your own, come on down there. We can take care of that too.
Well, that's good. Senator, it's Michael Schwartz from San Diego County Gun Owners. How are you?
Michael, good to see you. Good to hear you.
Yeah, good to talk to you. Um, you know, I, by the way, Senator Anderson's been enormously supportive of of everything we've done to try to preserve and fight for the Second Amendment here in San Diego. When we first came up with the idea of San Diego County Gun Owners, I sat down and had breakfast with Senator Anderson. And he said, I want to be your first check. And he helped us get started financially. I really appreciate that. Senator, what, maybe you could talk a little bit about, you know, what is the general attitude up in Sacramento when they're passing these bills? I mean, they're they're not effective at stopping criminals. They're clearly a, you know, just kind of an anti, you know, firearm agenda. They're not really sincerely trying to, you know, have an impact on crime. What do you see or, you know, what do you hear when you talk to your colleagues who are who are voting for these ridiculous things?
Well, I think there's a couple of things. First of all, many of them have never been to a range, have never been around a weapon, never fired one, have no idea the sportsman aspect. And, you know, you can have a lot of fun at the range. You can have a lot of fun hunting. You can have a lot of fun, you know, doing lawful things. They have no clue what that means. And that's the first thing. And the second thing is legislators are never held by the truth. I mean, that if they if they can spin it politically that they're taking care of crime by banning ordinary citizens, law-abiding citizens, Second Amendment rights, well, they're willing to take that because that gets headline stories. What we really need to be measuring is what, how are we impacting crime? Right? I mean, we know that if you put a gun-free zone in your in your front porch and you say, no guns on my property, if that system worked, everybody would be doing it. But they're not because they know that this is the biggest deterrent in not knowing that. But you have a constitutional right, whether you want to use it for hunting or recreation, or whether you want to use it for protection, doesn't matter. The state, the federal government shouldn't have a right to ask you. You have a right through our constitution to bear arms. And I think that's the that's the disconnect because they think the constitution is malleable and that they get to interpret how the constitution is supposed to be read.
Now, one of the things, a lot of people may not know, but Senator Anderson started out as an activist. He used to do a lot of community activism for a lot of different, a lot of different causes. And eventually your first run in office was on the waterboard out in East County, right?
That's correct. Michael, you're, listen, this is like the best Christmas gift ever. You're you're just touting all my accolades. I really appreciate it. But you know, the crazy part is the gun lobby in Sacramento in the eighties was the most powerful lobby. Nobody took up gun lobby. And they 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 played with brass knuckles and they showed up suited up for the game. And then somewhere between the nineties and two thousands, people kind of lost their way. Maybe they took it for granted, or maybe they're spending too much time on the range and not paying enough attention to Sacramento. And it and it drifted. And we lost a lot of a lot of focus and a lot of attention among legislators. And Michael, you've been part of the resurgence of the pro-Second Amendment folks in Sacramento. You know, it starts in your local neighborhood. It doesn't start in Sacramento. It starts in your local neighborhood. When that person runs for waterboard, they better be good on the Second Amendment because someday they're going to be the city councilman or the mayor, then your assemblyman, and then your senator, or even your your governor. And if we don't catch them early and front load them to make sure that they're going to protect our Second Amendment, we shouldn't be surprised when they try to steal our guns.
I like the term resurgence. I'm gonna I'm gonna use that. We are. This is the San Diego County Gun Owners is the Second Amendment resurgence.
Absolutely. And don't forget Gun Sports Radio.
And Gun Sports Radio.
How many radio shows in San Diego or in California doing guns positive or doing guns period?
You know, I only listen to the best. I only listen to this station.
That's all we care about. Hey, since you're terming out, please don't tell me you're just gonna go fishing.
No, I still have a year left in the Senate, so I'm laser focused and fishing strong. But I am going to be running for county supervisor here in East County. Diane Jacob is termed out in 2020, and that's the seat I'm gearing up for. So you're not going to get rid of me for too long.
Good. Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because a lot of people ask, have been asking me. And I says, well, you know, I don't know what his what his aspirations are, but I doubt he's going to give up getting back to the community because that's really what you do.
You know, I didn't set out to be in office, but I have to be honest with you. It's the most rewarding job there is out there. And I think I understand better why people are firemen and police officers. When you can help your neighbor, when you can lift your community, the endorphins in your brain fire off like no other.
Yep.
And it is so rewarding. And I absolutely love it. It's been a blessing to me and my family to serve in the Senate. And I feel very privileged to represent the people of East County.
Yeah, well, we got to do something about Sacramento. That's all I can say. I mean, there's just.
Well, you know, I I was out celebrating my my 30th anniversary.
Congratulations.
My wife on a, thank you. I took my wife on a cruise in South America. And when I got back, I found out half my half of legislature has been accused of sexual misconduct.
Oh, you missed out on all that, huh?
Crazy.
I missed out on all of it. And I thought, oh, my gosh, this is like a Christmas come early. I feel horrible about the victims. I'm not. I don't want to make fun of the victims. But my colleagues now have self-destructed. They no longer have the stranglehold with the two thirds because they've got some vacant seats. And I think there's going to be more to go.
Oh, I agree.
This just goes to show the corruption in Sacramento. First, we had three senators that were going to follow the law, went to prison. And now we have all these senators and assembly members stepping down because they took sexual advances when women said no.
It's crazy.
So if you're willing to take sexual advances, if you're willing to do some of the despicable things that they did to women, why would we be surprised when they tried to steal our constitutional rights?
Absolutely.
It all fits together.
Yeah, it does. Hey, boss, you're done.
All right.
Never say that to a politician.
Nah, he's done. Hey, you never get to say that to a politician. That's the first chance I've had.
You know, Dave, everywhere I turn around, it's either your show I'm going on or you're following me onto someone else's show, whether it's KUSI or someplace else.
You notice?
You gotta be the hardest working guy in show business.
I'm number two to you, my friend. I'm number two. Keep up the good work.
You're too kind.
Have a very, very Merry Christmas and give the wife a great big 30-year hug from us.
You bet.
Thank you, Senator.
All right. Hey, we're gonna take a small break. This segment is brought to you by Gun Range San Diego. Be there, be square. AM 1170, The Answer. All right, folks. Hey, welcome back. You're listening to AM 1170, The Answer. This is Gun Sports Radio. Brought to you by the good folks at Trident Gunsmithing. Go to www dot tridentgunsmithing.com. Check them out. They've got all kinds of specials going on through the holiday season. They're open next week, and then I'm not sure what their holiday season is, but just go to tridentgunsmithing.com. You'll get all the information you like. All right. Hey, we got John Dillon on the line. Hey, John, how you doing, buddy?
Hey, how's it going, guys?
Yeah, not doing too bad. How are you? Back back home? Everything good?
Oh, yeah, back home, all set. The fires are all taken care of. So just hoping that another one doesn't come back.
Yeah, no kidding. Well, get that Tesla washed. So get all that ash off of it.
Oh, yeah, you'll have to call one of my family members to talk about Tesla. There we go. I just want to talk to the listeners about two things. Mainly a reminder with Proposition 63, that was a ballot initiative that was passed last year. There's some ammunition regulations that are going to be going into effect January 1st, 2018. And mainly, it is that you will not be able to buy ammunition online and ship it to your house or, you know, to your P O box, or you're not going to be able to personally ship it to yourself in any way. It's going to have to be shipped to a ammunition vendor or licensed ammunition vendor, AKA gun shops. Pretty much going to be the main source of ammunition vendor licenses. There's other ways for people to get them, but let's just keep it simple. So you have to send all your ammunition to shops in order to buy it online. And if you want to transfer any type of ammunition, like sell it, if you were going to sell a gun online, you know, you have to go into a shop and do all the paperwork to sell a gun to someone else, even private party in California. Now, if you want to sell ammunition, you're going to have to go down to an ammunition vendor license and have them literally hand it to the employee of the gun shop who will then hand it to the person you're selling to. And that's it.
Now, is there a background check? So there's eventually, we're going to have to get a card. Then you're going to get it, have to get a background check and everything. But that's not, that doesn't happen in January, right?
No, that does not happen this January. So when it comes to, Mike's talking about the ammunition purchase permits and then the background checks for ammunition. So in this, we have both both legislation that was passed in 2016 and also Proposition 63. So we'll see how they play out because there's a little bit of conflict of, you know, what one says versus the other. But essentially, July 1st, 2019 is when background checks will start applying to all ammunition purchases. So anytime you want to buy ammunition, you have to do go through the background check. The way it's worded, they're saying this is instantaneous and you can be cleared very quickly with no delay. But again, you know, this is California, this is DOJ. I'll believe it when I see it. Also, it contradicts the fact that we have to wait 10 days to clear background checks for handgun or any firearms purchase in California. But that's July 1st, 2019, the background checks. And also in 2019, that'd be when this ammunition purchase permit goes into effect. But we have yet to see how that's all really going to play out. So right now, it's just no shipping to yourself, no purchasing from individuals without literally just going into the gun shop or any ammunition licensed vendor and handing them the ammunition you're selling. Who and then they will hand it over to the guy who's buying it. There's no paperwork involved at this point. It's just literally making you drive, you know, out of your way to a gun shop to have a third party literally just hand over the ammunition.
It's just more proof that some of these rules that they're making are they are arbitrary at best.
And they don't know why they're making them.
I don't even know if you can count this as arbitrary. It's much lower than that.
What's less than arbitrary?
What else? See, they don't know what else to do. They really don't know what else to do. They're they're almost beside themselves trying to come up with regulations that make sense, kinda, to them and hope hoping we'll accept it.
Well, they don't.
California is so extreme, and we have so many restrictions on guns and ammunition already that, you know, these anti-gun politicians, there's already so many laws in the books in California. Now they're just coming up with anything, whether or not it is rational or would make any sense. They're just putting it on paper and hoping it gets, you know, approved just to say, yes, we're all about gun control. We want to restrict, you know, you know, guns. And they have no idea what their laws are doing. And they're just making it up on the fly just to put another law on paper.
Doesn't, is it Chicago or Detroit that's got the stiffest gun laws?
Something like that.
Okay, so let's just say Chicago. Do they have stricter gun laws than we have?
In varying ways. So I like to put it this way, like also New York, New Jersey have very strict gun laws compared with California. So not, you know, California doesn't have all the gun laws that Chicago has. Chicago doesn't have all the gun laws that California has, but they each have an exorbitant amount of gun laws. And they're extraordinarily strict and restrictive. But they're, all of the ones we just mentioned, they're in the top five right there.
So I got a question. So if someone has ammo, you just had ammo for a long time. And then the cops come in your house. How do you prove it's your ammo or that, you know, you legally have it now that these new laws come into effect?
Oh, yeah, that's a good question.
Think about this. I mean.
That's the thing. Like, there's all sorts of these like unknowns and weird situations and hypotheticals that we just don't know. We don't understand because like laws like this make no sense. Like I said, there's no paperwork involved in this sale stuff. So, you know, it's literally, I'm just handing it like I'd go into, you know, the Gun Range San Diego, hand over a box of ammunition to Hollywood. He would then hand it over to the guy who wants to buy it. That's it.
If you're lucky, he might keep.
Hand it to the buyer.
He'll keep two bullets.
Well, let's say you're coming back from.
It's just, there's all sorts of problems that come with this.
Yeah, come, let's say you're coming back, you're coming back from Perump, Nevada. You were shooting out there and you had some rounds left in your car and you get pulled over. So how do you prove that you had those rounds for the last three years?
Exactly. And are they expecting people to carry the receipts of when they purchased, you know, their ammunition to say, to prove that, no, I bought this at, you know, Gun Range San Diego two months ago? Are you supposed to hang on to that and stuff your receipt in with your ammo?
Well, that doesn't mean nothing. Just because you have a receipt, that doesn't mean that that's the exact ammo. But hey, John, let me ask you.
Exactly. There's all sorts of problems with this.
I was listening to the radio the other day, and they were talking about how Vegas has totally shut down the ability to bring a gun into any of the hotels. Have you heard anything about that?
So I think you're probably alluding to, there's a big thing that went around recently with this like new technology that one of the Vegas hotels is going to start incorporating. And it's some type of sensor that can basically detect if you have a weapon or a gun on you. Like, kind of like a metal detector. You walk through it. I don't know if it even works or like how accurate it is or anything like that, but.
Well, my point, my point is because Reader is going to have his event out at Front Sight. And is this going to affect his his program?
Well, you might obviously, you know, when you go into another state, you definitely, especially if you're going to be, you know, possessing firearms or bringing firearms into another state, make sure you do a little reading beforehand on the gun laws and how it works in whatever state you're going to. You know, any type of transportation laws, make sure you look those up. In Nevada, essentially, you know, there's not a lot of restrictions except, you know, when you're coming into casinos and hotels, since they are private property, they're allowed to, you know, make their own rules on how you have to, you know, transport your firearms and bring them in. A lot of hotels, especially if you're a guest, they do require you to check them in. And they said they put them in like an armory, a safe where you kind of get your your a tag that lets in exchange. And they kind of valet service your guns and that usually how it goes. With this, you're going to run into issues, you know, this kind of like firearm screening. Because it is legal to carry, especially if you have like a concealed carry. If you carry in a casino and they prohibit it, they can ask you to leave. If you refuse to leave, then they, you know, legal matters come into play. But, you know, people that have a concealed carry permit and walk into these hotels without knowing that the security systems exist, is it going to cause panics? And is it going to like cause security issues? Are police going to be involved just because someone's illegally carrying and they, you know, walk in through one of these security systems? I don't know how they're going to react. We'll see. But yeah, it does seem like they're getting a little more strict. At least within the casinos, not necessarily on the state level in Nevada because of, you know, the most recent shooting there.
Well, the charity event out in Perump, by the way, is about 45 minutes outside of Vegas. And the hotels in Perump are all very gun friendly.
Okay, good. I was just curious.
Yeah, they have Front Sight rates out there. You tell them you're saying you're, you know, training at Front Sight and they get a different rate.
It's weird if you don't check in with a gun.
Why else would you be in Perump?
Well.
For the Corvette driving school. Are you crazy?
There you go.
That's why you're there.
Corvette.
Right.
The only other thing I wanted to bring up on the legal level here was, you know, this last July 1st, 2017, we, that was when the magazine possession law was going to come into effect. Basically, any magazine over 10 rounds is going to be illegal to possess. And that's regardless of when you got it. The good news is, is that was challenged legally and an injunction was issued on that in favor of the opponents of the law. So essentially, although the law went into effect July 1st, it's been put on hold, so it can't be enforced yet until trial, until the matter's sorted out. That hasn't happened yet. But I do want to remind, you know, you guys, the listeners, that if you do have magazines that hold more than 10 rounds, you know, depending on when this court case is and when it's going to be decided and how it's decided, that'll, you know, basically instantaneously either make the law, you know, moot or it will put it into effect and it'll go, it'll be effective. So if you have 30-round capacity magazines, you know, that can be an issue. So I like to recommend if you're planning on, you know, converting them to 10-round magazines with a rivet or some type of stopper inside your magazine, do it sooner rather than later. Just in case you're not put in a weird position finding out about the, you know, the court decision two months after it happened.
All right, buddy. Hey, well, thank you very much, folks. Anytime you need a lawyer, gun-related, Gatsky Dillon in Balance, go 760-431-9501, www.ca firearmslaw.com. That's the first call you should make when in doubt. John, thanks a lot. If you're around tomorrow, maybe I'll stop by.
Sounds good.
All right, folks, we're gonna take a small break. You're listening to Gun Sports Radio right here on AM 1170, The Answer. All right, folks. Hey, welcome back. You are listening to Gun Sports Radio right here on AM 1170, The Answer. This segment is brought to you by the Gun Range San Diego itself. 7853 Balboa Avenue in San Diego, 10 to 10, seven days a week. Gun Range, thegunrange sandiego.com, thegunrange sandiego.com. Trust me, anything you need when it's relation to guns, training, purchasing, nobody's going to beat their prices and no one's going to beat their staff because their staff is not only trained, but friendly. If you don't believe it, here he is, Hollywood.
Yeah, come down and says, we'll prove it. Yeah, we are just, you know, you can go on Yelp, go on Google. And, you know, the only five-star range in San Diego County.
I gotta write that down.
And it's, so you get on Yelp, look at the reviews and see what people are saying. And then what I love about it is it's always about the employees. You know, every now and then we'll get one, hey, it's a beautiful facility or, you know, whatever. But my favorite part to go on to Yelp is when I'm reading about how great the employees are. And they're always giving those guys accolades and girls. And that's something to be proud of when you can get that kind of group of people together in this kind of an industry. And, you know, and people are talking about how friendly they are and not how snobby or, you know, rude or, you know. Sometimes you get that gun guy and he's just old tankers and, you know, and if you're not like him, you're not cool. You know, if you don't like the same guns he likes, then you don't know anything, you know? And that's just not how it is down there at Gun Range San Diego.
I feel like you were looking at me.
Old gun guy.
Total opposite of that.
We've been having all these guys on the show talk about this ammo ban and this thing that's coming up.
Exactly. We got the ammo ban, you know, that's well.
That's what I call it.
Yeah, it's, you know, the restriction on ammunition purchases. And that's why, you know, Veronica totally understands that. She knows that people are going to be in that mode to where they want to get it before, you know, the government starts putting their hand in into your business. And so we have these great deals right now, $350 for 1,000 rounds of 223 and $200 even for 1,000 rounds of nine millimeter. You know, and this isn't that that steel case, aluminum case stuff. This is nice brass case, full metal jacket, 115 grain, 1,000 rounds of nine millimeter. So it's, it's just, if you go to like Cheaper Than Dirt or anything like that to do some last minute online buying, it's going to be the same price. And with us, you don't have to pay shipping. You just show up and pick up your ammo.
Yeah, that's good.
And walk out the door. Yeah. And all these laws are kind of crazy, you know, arbitrary at best, like I said earlier. And, you know, I was doing some research and these these laws that they already have, just like John Dillon was saying, they already have so many laws on the books that if they would just enforce the laws properly that they have, they wouldn't need anything new. And what kills me is these, these people are up there, you know, they're they're giving us this gas tax. They are, you know, taxing us on our ammo now. They're taxing us on weapons purchases. And they're imposing all this on this money for us. And they're not spending the money properly. They're not spending money to, you know, stop gun violence or anything like that. They, I don't know, but what they are spending on is they gave themselves a 4% raise. You know, we have the highest paid legislator of legislature of any state.
That's why they got to tax our ammo to afford those.
That's why they have to tax everything.
Exactly. You know, so, you know, it's so important, you know, we had Mr. Anderson on earlier. You know, we got Mike Schwartz here with San Diego County Gun Owners. If you're not a member of that, then you are not part of the the real fight against these crooked politicians, these ignorant politicians who are making these gun laws. And they don't know anything about guns. They just hear somebody say, oh, we could do this. All right, well, I'll sign it. I don't know anything about guns, but I'm guessing this, you know, any type of restriction is good, right? And no, it's it's bad.
Well, they think guns are bad because guns kill people.
Right, yeah, exactly.
Hey, you brought up an important point earlier too about components, that none of these laws apply to the components. None of them apply to reloaders.
Absolutely. So you can still, you know.
They don't know how to do that. They don't know what a reloader is.
Right. Well, again, because the people who make gun laws don't know anything.
That's what I said. They don't know what a reloader is. So look at the big deal on the bump stock. I mean, that literally made the gun community laugh. And NRA said, oh, okay, fine, ban it. Yeah, fine with us.
Anybody that's ever had a bump stock, they know it's for novelty purposes. All it does is waste ammo. It doesn't really.
Right. And if you're any good with a rifle, or you can do the same thing that a bump stock does without it.
Right.
If you're proficient and you've been firing that particular weapon, you can replicate that.
We, we, on this program, we preach this all the time. You know, if you have, whatever your budget is, half of that goes toward the gun, the other half goes toward training.
Right.
So, you know, being being trained, how do you put it, trained, sane and.
Law-abiding.
And law-abiding, you know, and that, there's no better person to be around in a dangerous situation than a sane, trained, law-abiding gun owner. And if you want to reload your own stuff, come on down. You can come see me. Just ask for Hollywood.
Classes? You guys have classes?
We don't have them yet because, you know, we haven't seen that much interest in it. But we do have the classroom facilities. We can make it happen. And, you know, I'm, I'm pretty darn good at it. You know, and I can show you the difference between making a pistol load to a rifle load, the components you need, you know, what a powder load is, you know, how many, you know, I can explain to you.
How many grains?
Exactly what a grain is versus an ounce and that kind of thing. And now all that stuff is weighed out. So it's, I mean, you can get into a really, really, really nice, I'm talking like a progressive, you know, really nice setup for about 1,500 bucks. I mean, and I'm talking where you're making hundreds of rounds an hour. And that's, you know, and you can have that stuff.
Can you buy the the casings separate?
Buy the casings. You can buy the separate, you can buy the casings from us. You can buy them offline. You can buy the powder. You can buy the, you know, there's there's four components to a round. You have the bullet, you know, which is the projectile. You have the casing, the powder and the primer.
That's it.
And that's it. And just.
Put it together correctly.
Correctly. It's the right formula to put those things together correctly and safely. And, yeah, then there's no, then there's nobody in your business. You don't have the government, you know, breathing down your neck showing, you know, wanting to know how much ammo you're having. Because what we haven't talked about was eventually there's going to be a deal where there's a statewide database. You come down to, you know, here. You come down to, you know, here in, uh, 2019, 2020, you're gonna be coming down to Gun Range San Diego, hey, I want that thousand round deal that you got going on. And we're gonna do it. And then I'm gonna have to get online, log on to the DOJ website and type out, you know, John Smith, who's ammo purchase number is 34789, and he just purchased a thousand rounds of nine millimeter.
Let me ask a question. What about gunpowder? Are there any restrictions on gunpowder? Cause if you're gonna reload, you gotta buy gunpowder.
One of the four components is the smokeless gunpowder. And no, the only restriction is, uh, you can't, uh, you can't only store, without special containers, what's called a, a powder magazine, you can only store up to eight pounds in one container. That's the, that's it, right. That's the only restriction right now.
Right now. Cause right now.
And that's a federal, and that's a federal restriction. Unless you have, again, you have one of those, uh, you have a powder magazine.
Is there a limit that you can buy?
Again, yes, without, um-
Like if I just came down, I want 3,000 pounds of gunpowder.
Well, I'd sell it to you, but you could only take it at 750 pounds at a time. And that's if you have a powder magazine and an explosives handling license and a San Diego County Sheriff's permit, uh, except explosives.
Oh, I bet that's an easy one to get.
Well, I, well, if Hollywood can get it, anybody can get it.
Well, there's a point there too.
But no, there's, there's, there's a lot of great things you do. Oh, and I forgot, before we run out of time, uh, we have our 12 Guns of Christmas and this, this week's is the Taurus, uh, the M85 revolver for $209.
Hey.
Uh, .38 revolver, $209. Uh, you come down there and pick that up. We got plenty of those in stock, but really the biggest deal is everything, what are, you know, we, we put out the mag, uh, the ammo last week and it was such a big hit that Veronica ordered a ton more. Like I said, I, I, I bet we got 50,000 rounds in that place.
Good.
So come on-
Taurus M85.
The M85 Taurus. And it's only, uh, 209 bucks. I like it. Every time I give, give the gun to the week, everybody else pulls out their phone. They wanna see.
They're all looking at their phone.
What's that same gun, but it's hammerless?
Well, it would, it would be-
642.
Well, it would, that would be a Smith and Wesson.
It's a Smith and Wesson.
Well, Smith and Wesson makes a hammerless, it's a, it's a, uh, uh, 242 or something like that, or 440, it's a 442, I think. Smith and Wesson makes a hammerless. Taurus makes a hammerless as well. The problem with all of this stuff is you have to be able to, you know, you gotta find the one that's on the, the right, the, the California roster, you know, which is another one of those ridiculous, you know, restrictions that California puts on its citizens. You know, we talked about the, the roster before where even though there's, you know, 600 and some firearms on that roster, when you break it down, uh, it's, there's really less than 300 because, you know, a Glock 19 black and a Glock 19 green are the same, yeah, olive drab are the, are the same, you know, they're the same gun, but that's considered two different guns on, um, you know, on the California roster.
Well, speaking of all that, so we got, well, this is the last week for buying for Christmas, right?
Right, yeah.
I was in Gun Range San Diego the other day and some lady came, walked up and said, hey, can I get a, a gift card?
I sold, I've sold about six today before I came on the show.
Exactly. It's just awesome. So if you don't know what to give for something, get them a gift card, get them some ammo, get them whatever, you know?
Yep. They had the lady, had this one girl come in and she wanted to take all of her friends shooting, so she was sweet. She, she's like, it was me and my three friends. So I wanted everybody to go shooting. So we came up with the price. She goes, all right, I want, I want a gift card with that on it. And then she goes, you know what? No, 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 right, split it into two. No, 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 there's gonna be four of us. I'm gonna pay for my own to put it and give two thirds on three different cards. But we got it figured out for her. So she was able to give her friends her, you know, what it was gonna take them to get.
A lot of people don't know what to buy somebody, just get them a gift card, you know, male, female, it doesn't matter. Plenty of stuff down there, they're, they're gonna want.
She was tickled to, to be able to leave and, and know they were gonna have a good time when they came back in there.
Use the gift card for shooting in the range as well as buying something?
Anything in the store, anything, whether it's range time, you can use it for training, if you wanted to get a class, you could use it for ammo, gun purchase, uh, range time, anything you want, gun rentals, whatever.
If you're like me, you've already gotten all your Christmas shopping done. But this is a good, I know.
It's a good last minute. Haven't started.
Yeah, this is a good last minute gift idea, right?
Oh, yeah. You know, especially it, it's great for office, Christmas parties, stocking stuffers, you know, and you're just, you're not sure. And like I said, we've been doing a lot to, uh, for full gun purchases, you know, people are coming in and like my husband or my wife or my sister, my mom, whatever, has been looking for this particular firearm. Do you have it? Sure, we got it right here.
Bingo.
How much is it total? So we ring it up, it's this much money total. Put that on a gift card. I will be back there after Christmas.
There you go. All right. Hey, we're gonna take a small break and we come back, who knows what's coming up next? We'll have to look right here on Gun Sports Radio. I'm Dave.
I'm Lance.
This is KCBQ AM 1170, The Answer.
AM 1170, The Answer.
All right, folks, welcome back. You're listening to Gun Sports Radio right here on AM 1170. This segment is brought to you by the good folks at Trident Gunsmithing, www.tridengunsmithing.com, tridengunsmithing.com. Go to their website, check it out. Big on hunting, hunting classes, they even teach you how to make sausage. All righty, so we got a free for all in the last 15.
We had a great time at Mikey's Christmas party.
We had a phenomenal time.
We did. Everybody was, was dressed up, looking good.
Yep, hundreds of people at San Diego County Gun Owners.
And the most competitive guy there was Leo Hamill. He had a death grip on his little raffle ticket. He was cracking me up, but no, everybody seemed to have a good time. Ale Smith Brewery, folks, if you ever get an opportunity, you need to check it off. They have their own street, uh, right off of Miramar Road. It was a really good place, but that was a, that was a really, really good event.
It was cool. Hundreds of people. We gave away all kinds of cool stuff.
More than last year, you think?
Uh, it, yeah, I think, yeah, I think the, the prizes this year were, were more than last year.
The prizes for sure.
Yeah. Um, and, uh, it was, uh, it was pretty cool. Alone and Unafraid and the gun, uh, the Gun Range San Diego and, uh-
And the mouth showed up.
The, which one? Me?
Yeah.
Yep, yep. You helped us out, uh-
We had a good time.
Giving things away. It was, it was a really good time.
Veronica was there too.
Veronica was there. Yep, she was having a good time.
And her husband was there.
Yeah, it was, it was a really fun event.
My little girl wasn't there. Who was my little girl?
Sammy wasn't, Sammy didn't make it this time.
That's the most adorable little thing, I swear to God.
She was at our Christmas party for the Gun Range. She was hanging out and, uh, she was the, uh, she was the little elf that gave out all the Christmas cards.
She would be the elf.
Yeah, she was the sweetheart. It was super fun.
How cool it is, I, I mean, really, truly, looking across the room, and this is our third annual, looking across the room and seeing hundreds of gun owners come together for a Christmas party.
Yeah.
How cool is that?
Every walk of life.
I was just about to say, isn't it is an eclectic group?
If you were to lie, come into a room and say, okay, Jay or Mike, what, how many of these are gun owners? You'd never know, cause that's the uniqueness about gun owners. Yeah, no offense, Joel Anderson, not in a million years would I have thought Joel was a shooter. Jim Kidrick, oh, by the way, I went to the Air and Space Museum and I had a meeting, we're gonna do this thing next year called Speed and every month it's gonna be a different speed. So I told him, I says, I says, yeah, I says, yeah, we had Jim on a show, he wears shaps, those little furry ones with the cowboy hat. And everybody looked at him. So he told about, I said, you need to come back on and promote your group again, but yeah, you just never, you never know.
You never know.
But folks, this year is over with, but next year is coming. We are gonna be here and we want your support. We want you to help get the word out. We want you to join San Diego County Gun Owners. It's a measly $10 a month, for goodness sakes. Uh, you're never gonna get the best, that's the best bang for your buck by far. Not only the camaraderie, you get to hang out with really cool people, come to Christmas parties and we got the gala in March or April.
April.
I mean, it's just, the only way we're gonna make a difference for our kids is to get active today. You can't sit on your couch and complain that you don't like what's going on unless you get off your butt and do something.
Absolutely, you know, and it's, we preach it on this, uh, radio show all the time. You gotta get out there, you gotta get out there and vote, you gotta, and it's not just for the senators, it's not just for the presidential stuff, it's just not for Congress.
Local.
It's everything that's local, just like Joel Anderson was on during the first segment. He started at a water board in El Cajon and now he's a senator.
Yep.
You know?
He was in the assembly and center, next is gonna be county board.
Right, right. So, I mean, and these are the people that you need to know about, you know, is this person pro second amendment or is this person anti second amendment? And the easiest way to do that, I mean, you can sit at home and do all your research and spend all your free time, you know, researching everybody, calling and making, having interviews, or pay your $10 a month and pay the people who do this for a living and know how to do it right. Pay San Diego County Gun Owners $10 a month and then all you have to do is log on to our website and there it is. These are the people who are pro, these are the people who are against.
Or you can listen to our show. We will, we will be bringing on politicians throughout the year strictly to let you listen to what they have to say.
And that's, and that's pro and, and anti.
Starting next month.
Starting next month.
January is the season.
No, we got, we have to do it. We cannot be complacent. You know, we have to, you know, I, I, there's so many things we become complacent about. You know, when something happens, you know, the NFL, for example, okay, now if you turn on the NFL, guess what? They don't show the national anthem anymore. They've eliminated it. And the only reason I know that, cause I boycott the NFL right now.
You and me both.
And, but I turned it on at the 10 o'clock show. I turned it on at five minutes to 10 and I purposely sat there and I waited and when they came, when they, the cameras went live, they were already on the field.
I actually decided to boycott too, uh, earlier today, the Packers, uh, lost and they're no longer in the contention for the playoffs, so I am now boycotting the NFL.
Until the end of the year, until the end of the season.
Until, until August of next year.
You know, I had a really cool conversation today, a friend, uh, she's a mom, uh, kinda, you know, she's, she's a housewife and a mom and, uh, you know, uh, kinda suburban, you know, uh, you know, soccer mom type. And a friend of hers just got approved for a CCW, thanks to San Diego County Gun Owners and she was asking, approved.
Really?
Yeah.
That's our first?
He is one of the first, yeah.
Oh, wow. Okay, good news.
We're starting to get approvals from folks that are going through the system. And she said, okay, so he's gonna actually carry a gun like with him all the time now. And I said, yeah, probably. And she said, wow, she said, now, if you got a CCW, would you carry a gun all the time? And I said, yeah, probably I would. And she said, wow, she said, well, you know what? I support that. I want more people doing that. She said, I don't wanna carry a gun. That's not for me. But I think more people should, should be able to, and I want more people to be able to.
Same, trained and law abiding.
There you go. But I thought it was really interesting that, like I said, this, you know, suburban soccer mom, she said, hey, it's not for me, but it's a better world out there if, you know, more people are able to.
I had, I was over at a little Christmas gathering yesterday and the lady of the house comes up to me and she goes, she goes, you know, I've, I've listened to your show and I'd really, I'd re, I don't even wanna know. What the heck? Sorry, mic's wrecked at the place. What are you doing over here? Well, anyway, it was an older, I mean, and her daughter's in her, in her twenties and she says, I'd really like to get my daughter trained. I says, well, all you gotta do is go down to, you know, Gun Range San Diego, see any of the folks down there and tell them you heard it on the radio and they will hook you up. I says, I'll even, you go down on a Monday, I'll take care of it. And have her bring her girlfriend with her, so the three of you guys go down and learn to, learn. Get trained, get trained and then learn to shoot.
But it, and it's, but it's the, you know, now she has a friend, now she knows somebody who's actually carrying a gun to defend himself, to defend others, you know, around him if, if something actually happens. And what did it do to her thinking? I'm not saying she was against it before, but it made her go, oh, that guy, I know that guy, he's an old friend. Of course he should be able to defend himself.
Right.
So that, it's that kinda-
Didn't wanna have a gun. She is, no, not interested. All right, fine. I think you should have one. Nope, not interested. Nope, nope. Her girlfriend comes up, yeah, you wanna go down to the range? Oh, you shoot?
Yeah.
Honey, what? Now you want a gun? I asked you to get a gun, but oh no, your girlfriend says so. But hey, you know what? I don't care. I don't care. I don't care how you get to the pond, just get to the pond.
There you go.
Yeah. So, all right. So what else we got? We still got a few more minutes?
You know, I attended a really neat function on Friday night. It was, uh, for a group called Rachel's Challenge. And I don't know if you guys heard about this, but, um, that whole deal with Columbine, when that went down, one of, one of the 13 people that were killed was this young lady named Rachel, who turned out to be an extraordinary person at her age, uh, had wrote all this stuff and was really this, this leader person that you really never knew about, unsung hero. And, um, and more than just the bullying stuff, but really, uh, teaching, um, talking to kids about empowering them and things like that. So her father, can you imagine? He, he gave this presentation on Friday, um, a guy named Darryl. And so he created this, uh, organization called Ra- Rachel's Challenge. Uh, it's been around now for 19 years. Now they're around the world, uh, they're in many schools in, in the United States. Um, they're kinda setting up a second base here in San Diego.
What do they do?
Home base. Um, they go into schools and they talk to kids about this thing called Rachel's Challenge. And they, they use Rachel's, uh, actual stuff and, and talk about how to empower kids themselves. Not only kids that are being picked on, but the bullies themselves. And I never seen anything like it. I was really taken back on how, how well spoken they were and, um, uh, how involved they get the kids themselves. And, uh, what it does is how it drops down referrals and things like that. Very, um, it's, uh, very good. So we'll talk about that more in the show.
To help kids that are maybe being bullied or alienated?
Yes, alien, those kids and then also too, you know, the, the bullies, uh, themselves and really actually changing the, the fabric. I've never seen anything like it. So we'll talk more about it on the show, but it's called Rachel's Challenge when you get a chance and look it up. It had nothing to, to do about, you know, the bad guy. Uh, they're gonna be local now. They're actually out of Colorado.
That'd be a good KUSI segment, I'm sure.
Terrific. Great group. Rachel's Challenge, look it up.
All right. Well, hey, Christmas is right around the corner, folks. This, this station, and we do say Merry Christmas. Go to Gun Range San Diego, go to Trident Gunsmithing, go to San Diego County Gun Owners, you know, that would make for a great Christmas stuffing.
Tell your friends.
Yeah, yeah, tell your friends. That's the main thing. Yeah. Somebody, you'll buy somebody a whole year with San Diego County gun, what is it, the 10 Ring?
Yeah. 10 Ring Club.
Get a little card. Hey, by the way, when, okay, now I just, do you notify people that have joined when they're, when they're?
Oh, yeah. Yep.
Yeah, that's right. You're married to Lauren. She'll make sure that you can send in your next that not. Well, I wanna make sure we do it. All right. Well, folks, we wanna thank you very much. This is Gun Sports Radio right here on AM 1170, The Answer.
See you next week.
The Answer.
Gun Sports Radio is sponsored by Love Radio Network.